Okay, the time is 6:00 PM, June 1st, 2020. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Manager Billingsley, may we have roll call, please?
Councilwoman Hughes.
Here.
Councilwoman Cortez.
Here.
Councilwoman Larson.
She is here, I saw her. Mr. Bidder just said to stand by one moment, please. We can proceed with roll call.
Councilwoman Wall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Bidder, did you locate Councilmember Larson?
She'll be entering momentarily.
Very much. Before we start this moment of silence, I want to state that yesterday afternoon, Governor Ducey announced a statewide emergency and issued a week-long curfew. While our wonderful town of Florence, our community has not had any issues with any of these riots, fights, or fires, I want our community to know that our Chief of Police and Sheriff Lamb are planned and prepared. Before we start the moment of silence, I'd like everybody to keep that in your hearts, whether you say a silent prayer, whether you have a thought, I just want you to keep that in your mind of bringing our community together, working together. On our agenda this evening, we also have members of our community that are enlisting in the armed forces, and I want us to also keep them in our hearts. So, at this time, let's go ahead with our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we're going to go ahead and start our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal actions. Mr. Billingsley, do we have any call to the publics?
Madam Mayor, I just talked to the clerk, we have not received any call to the public.
Thank you very much. Item 6A, Public Hearing and Presentations. Our first is a proclamation declaring June 14th, 2020, as the Army's 245th birthday. Whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress, representing the citizens of the 13 American colonies, authorized the establishment of the Continental Army. And whereas the collective expressions of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of the new nation's basic principles and values in the Constitution. Whereas for the past 245 years, the United States Army's central mission has been to fight and win the nation's war. Whereas the motto of duty, honor, and country is the creed by which the American soldier lives and serves. Whereas no matter what the cause, location, or magnitude of future conflicts, the nation can rely on the United States Army to produce well-trained, well-led, and highly motivated soldiers to carry out missions and entrust to them. Whereas the components of the United States Army, to include the Arizona Army National Guard, the United States Army Reserves, and the regular Army have contributed immensely to the COVID-19 response. Whereas the members of the town of Florence have proudly served and made the ultimate sacrifice for our nation's freedom while serving the United States Army and other branches of our nation's military. Now therefore, I Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2020, to be the United States Army's 245th birthday and express appreciation on behalf of the people of Florence, Arizona, and the United States Army, and to the dedicated soldiers who have served in it for over 245 years that it has been in existence. Our next agenda item this evening is very special, it's very near and dear to our hearts. This next agenda item is a proclamation that will declare Florence's pride in all that who have enlisted in the military and urge all citizens to continue to support our military service personnel and the families of those who are serving in the armed forces. This is something that we do- While these young men and women are entering the room, we're going to go ahead and read their proclamation. They will stop and they will have a picture, and we are immensely proud of them. This proclamation supports Florence's youth enlisting in the armed forces. Whereas men and women join the military in part because of the benefits the military offers, but more importantly, they join the military and put their lives on the line so the rest of us might live in a safer, freer, more just world. And whereas Gabriel Alston, Gage Doty, Jose Franco, Jose Grineo, Jacob Harrison, Gianna Lovicchio, Francisco Reyes, Michael Reyes, Venetia Street, who we wish could be with us this evening, however she has already left for boot camp. Trevion Tarver and Sean Van Zalen have demonstrated their courage and commitment to the freedom by enlisting in the armed forces. Each will take an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies-
Tarver.
Jose Grineo, Army Reserves.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and is ready to stand and defend our great country with honor, courage, and commitment, so that way we may all enjoy the freedom afforded to each of us. And whereas our military personnel defend us in times of peace, times of war, and times of crisis, both natural and man-made.
Gianna Lovicchio, Army National Guard.
And render the highest service any American can offer, and is a guardian of freedom in the American way of life, and where we are profoundly grateful for this sacrifice that they have chosen to offer each of us. Because of their heroism, we are able to sleep soundly at night, knowing that they are valiantly guarding our freedoms. Whereas we must also remain committed to support our men and women who have grown up in our community and are part of our communal family in order to ensure that they have what they need in order to complete their missions wherever they may be, we must also commit to support the families they leave behind and support them when they return
Francisco Reyes, Marine Corps.
Michael Reyes, Marine Corps.
Now therefore, be it resolved by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, I here dubi proclaim Florence's pride in those who have enlisted and urge all citizens to continue to support our military service personnel and the families of those who are serving in our armed forces. I want to say thank you for all of those that are enlisting that could have attended this evening. It's a very special proclamation that we do every year. Typically, it's prior to the students graduating, and it's recognizing their commitment to our country and to their community. We appreciate and value them for their service and being willing to sign up to protect our freedoms. It does kind of break my heart that we still have to do this in COVID-19 style, I would be remiss if I didn't say that. So, understanding that these are unique times, I am thankful that they were able to be here this evening. In case any council members are unaware, we're going to each have an opportunity to speak to our students, we're going to put it together in a video format, and it will be sent to them. So at this time, Councilmember Wall, do you have any words for our youth that have enlisted today?
Seeing the young, ooh, kind of emotional for me, seeing these young people who are making this commitment is really a significant step in their lives, and I just want to congratulate them for their willingness to step up and enlist in the military, and I know that it will have a major role in their growth and development through the rest of their adult lives, and I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Hughes.
I wanted to thank each and every person that has signed up for the armed forces. I'm glad to see that there are valiant young men and young women that are still standing firm for our freedom. I congratulate you. Our son is in the military, and it's an honor to see him grow, grow in statehood, in patriotic duty. So, I'm very, very pleased that we have so many Floridians that are still growing and wanting to serve their country.
Councilmember Larson.
I just also want to congratulate them and thank them for their service. You're making Florence very proud in your decision to serve, and that we are with you in spirit and wish you the best.
Councilmember Cortez.
I wasn't prepared to give a statement, I didn't know we were doing that. I am proud of every person who chooses to serve in our military. My family can date back its service to the moment we stepped on this land, and we have fought in every single war that this country has had. So, I have come from a long line of service people, and I just wish you safety and God speak.
Vice Mayor.
I also would like to thank all the young people that have enlisted in our services. Also would like to thank the parents for their support of these young people. You know, this last two weeks have been a very trying time in our nation, the last several months have been a trying time, and we've seen what our military can do to support us and to support those freedoms, the freedoms to demonstrate peacefully and the freedoms to carry out all of our constitutional rights. So, it's a big responsibility that these young people take on, and I just want to, again, thank them for all they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them one round of applause. Yeah, Councilmember Cortez, typically we would say it when they're here in the room, but because they're not, we decided that, you know, just tonight, we would go ahead and record this and send it off to them. Mayor, the last person that came through, his brother is running late, they are hanging out in the lobby, and they will be in, they would both like to have their picture taken with their father in front of council. Absolutely. So, they're going to give us a little wave when they're ready. Okay, if they're ready? Not yet. Not yet. I'm trying to mask read, just kidding. I understand you, I got it. All right, until he arrives, we'll go ahead and proceed with Item 7 on the consent agenda. 6C, I'm so sorry. Glasses or larger print helps. There we go. Item 6C is our public hearing to receive public comments on how the Town of Florence could use a portion of the CARES Act funding received from the state Arizona CARES Fund. I just want to have Ben Bidder give a little bit of background on this, and I just wanted to preface this, that while it's not typically a requirement, this is something that, you know, myself as mayor, council staff, we feel very passionately about in regards to wanting to hear from our businesses, our citizens, and our community as a whole. The COVID-19 has impacted all of us in many different ways, so the opportunity for this funding that has come through, we're very grateful for. I know that, you know, Michelle, you had, Councilmember Cortez, you had gone and spoken at the county. I have talked with and coordinated with Representative Cook. We've all been advocating and just working so hard and are grateful and appreciative of Governor Ducey for releasing this funding. So now that it's here, Mr. Bidder, can you give us a little bit of background about it, just for public knowledge as well?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. In March, late March of this year, Congress passed and President Trump signed the CARES Act. A lot of us remember or know of the CARES Act because that's what we all got a stimulus check from, was through the CARES Act. Lesser-known aspects of that CARES Act distributed funding across the country to states, local governments, and a variety of other areas whereby those funds could be further distributed to the communities to help in the relief and/or recovery from the coronavirus pandemic. One of the major aspects of that was that funding went to states and local governments as a means of economic recovery. And so, there were five cities and/or counties in the state of Arizona that received a direct allocation from the federal government. Those were any organizations that had population of 500,000 or above. So in Arizona, that was Maricopa County, Pima County, the city of Tucson, the city of Phoenix, and the city of Mesa. All five of those entities received a direct allocation from the federal government based off of a per capita share of the total amount of money that was authorized in the CARES Act. So each of those entities received about $274 per person for each person that lived within their jurisdictional boundary. Everyone else within each state across the country received an allocation through their state. So for example, Florence received an allocation that went to the state of Arizona, and then it was up to the governor to decide when and how to distribute those funds. So on May 27th, the governor announced his plan, which he set up what is called the AZ CARES Fund, and that fund distributed in a direct allocation to each local government, regardless of size, as long as it was below that 500,000 threshold and wasn't one of those five organizations that received the allocation in March or April. Each of those entities received $114.89 per person, that we could then justify those expenses based off of the costs of our public safety operations. And so, we have gathered together payroll information and will be submitting our request to receive the funding from the state of Arizona's AZ CARES Fund. With that, the funding could come back to about $3.1 million for the Town of Florence, and if and when we receive that money, we can use a portion to cover our costs that may relate to public safety, as was intended, or we could use any other portion as the mayor and council may decide. So our thought was that we could start gathering public opinion, and we wanted to be able to have a time where the public could come to speak, even though we're in this unfortunate situation with coronavirus and can't really have a traditional public hearing. And so, we advertised, starting on Friday, about people that could put in their comments, they could email our town clerk and submit those comments to her, and/or schedule a time to come today. We didn't have anyone that scheduled a time to come here and provide their comments, but we did receive some comments from the public in terms of what they would like to see the Town of Florence use, any additional funding that we may receive. The one other thing that I would add, maybe before I take some questions, if you have them, is that there is still remaining funds in the state of Arizona's allocation. The state received $1.8 billion. The allocation that cities received is $441 million, and so, there is still a great capacity for future rounds of funding. We don't know if that will come, we don't know when that would come, if it does indeed come in the future. And so, we will continue to lobby the governor and his office and staff to release those funds as intended by the federal CARES Act. We continue to participate on weekly phone calls with Senate staff, and Senator Sinema in particular has a strong interest in ensuring that those funds get distributed to the local government agencies that they were intended for. And so, we continue to advocate for that and really hope to see as much funding as possible come to our local economy so that we can recover faster. So with that, happy to take any questions you may have, and then I know our clerk has some comments that would like to be read into the record.
At this time, is there any council members that have any questions? Councilmember Wall?
Could you repeat the amount per capita that the funds were allocated for?
So for the larger communities that received the direct allocation from the federal government, they received $274.49 per capita, so that's for the five large organizations. And as part of this first round of funding through the AZ CARES Fund, our smaller communities, such as the Town of Florence, City of Casa Grande, City of Tolleson, whoever may be, all received an additional $114.89 per person.
So where did I get the idea that it was $170-something dollars?
Could be a mix.
Well, I know that's the number that we have been talking about between Representative Cook and ourselves, and that's what we were advocating on, and that is also what was in the agenda.
Yeah, if you look on the second page of the request for council action, you see that the cities in Litchfield Park or Sarita, which sit in Maricopa or Pima Counties, for example, they've been given $289 per capita. That's the 100, maybe I misspoke, $174.50 that the federal government received, plus an additional $114.89, because they received effectively both tranches. One direct allocation to Maricopa County, for example, for Tolleson, or Queen Creek, or Gilbert, they all received money to Maricopa County that they could apply to Maricopa County for, but then also through the governor's AZ CARES allocation, received the additional
Thank you.
Sure. And I apologize if I misspoke, it was $174.50 and $114.89.
Are there any other questions?
So, with, so they got $274 directly?
$174.50, I believe is the number, $174.
Is what Mesa and all of them got.
Correct. So, Maricopa County received an allocation for its whole population, except Phoenix and Mesa. So, when you take Maricopa County and say there are 4 million, I'm just going to use round numbers to make it easy, because this is very complex. If you take the 4 million people that live in Maricopa County, and say a million live in Phoenix, and 500,000 live in Mesa, you have 1.5 that live outside, or the, excuse me, the 1.5 million that live inside the two largest jurisdictions, and then 2.5 million people that live outside of those two largest jurisdictions. So, Maricopa County, if you were to have received a dollar, for example, for each person, they would have received $2.5 million. Phoenix would have received $1 million, and Mesa would have received $500,000. So in total, it would have equaled that full sum of $4 million. But then you have to multiply, in this instance, that times 174.5, because each person received
Okay, you lost me, but that's okay, I'll find myself through that mess. But, those areas that got that direct allocation, got a larger allocation than those of us that are smaller got, correct?
Correct.
So are they going to be asked to then contribute back what the governor is trying to keep from the rest of us?
Councilmember Cortez, there's no intention, I've seen from the governor's office, to reduce that amount of funding. What I believe is that Maricopa County and Pima County received those large allocations from the federal government.
Ms. Garcia, can you open the door?
And then the governor's staff, as a matter of administrative convenience, issued that to all of the remaining jurisdictions that did not receive funding in the first round.
Yeah, just at a shorter amount, just at a smaller amount.
Correct.
So not only did we have to fight to get what we got, but they're not going to give us what Maricopa and Phoenix and those larger areas got, so kind of a double jab at us.
And it could be in the future that, again, we see additional rounds of funding, and those could have different guidelines or different parameters, maybe they exclude Maricopa and Pima County in a second round of funding. We don't know what that looks like yet, but that's certainly something we would advocate for.
Yeah, I would advocate for everybody to receive the same dollar amount across the board, regardless of the size of your community, it's per person that lives in your area, and so that's the dollar amount that everyone should get. And if they would have done it as just a one-round thing, then none of us would be sitting here trying to fight and argue over what was essentially sent to us but then is being held back from us. So that's just my opinion.
Duly noted.
Yes, real quick, so just so I'm fully understanding, is it, it sounds like some of these cities that are in Maricopa County are double-dipping, essentially, because they're getting the federal funding, and they're also getting the second wave that was, that everyone fought for, because even though they're in Maricopa County, is that the way I'm understanding that?
So maybe for clarity, Maricopa County received a direct allocation based off of its total population. So that includes the amount of people in Gilbert, that includes the amount of people in Chandler, and Tolleson, and Avondale, Peoria, surprise, everywhere, that's all included in that initial allocation that Maricopa County received directly from the federal government and the U.S. Department of Treasury. Then, for administrative convenience, when the governor's AZ CARES Fund was established, every community except the five, so Maricopa County did not receive a direct allocation from the governor's office as part of the AZ CARES Fund, but they had already received the federal allocation. So every other entity received the straight $114.89 per capita, including those that are within Maricopa County and Pima County.
Got their money directly.
Yeah.
And counsel, I would mention as well, I know Maricopa County, at the very least, has had discussions with their Board of Supervisors as to how they will spend the money. I assume Puma County has gone through the same process, but I have not seen any sort of dialogue in terms of how those individual communities might receive funding from their county as a whole. And so, I do not know if Maricopa County and/or Puma County intend to retain all of that money that they've received from the federal government for themselves, or if they choose to provide some sort of allocation similar to how the governor has done for us. But again, that would be the question that those communities in those counties would have to ask. And so I think that's where the governor's staff came from, is that they were trying to give a direct allocation and make sure every community got it. But certainly, Maricopa County and Puma County have gotten the largest tranche of funding compared to the rest of us.
Appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
I want to pause for one moment and go back to our youth that are enlisting in the military. Manager Billingsley?
Francisco Reyes, United States Marine Corps.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open the public comment, and Ms. Garcia, can you read into record those that have reached out to us?
Our first email that we did receive is from Heather Smith. She states, "I think if we use, I think if we invested the money into bringing the buildings up to code throughout downtown Florence, we could have an easier time bringing businesses or even bars or restaurants to create more revenue for the town. It would also make our historic town a destination for people to come and check out."
Thank you.
Second one we received is from business owner Michael Baca. He states, "As a business owner in the historic downtown Florence Business District, our question is specifically regarding the many empty buildings in dire despair in that area. We see the need, needs and challenges. We want to embrace our history when solving some of those needs. These buildings have been empty for years and are not any closer to being occupied because it is too costly for a business owner or to bring the buildings up to code and start a business. We would like to see the Cares Act money used to restore at least one building in the historic downtown so that it can be occupied by a business. Specifically, we'd like to see a building ready for a restaurant that could be an experience based on our great historic asset, or a business that would attract tourists, as we see the great potential that they bring to the area. If we have a successful business in the area, we will build momentum. We will have more tourists and more opportunity to attract outside investors that would have money to do both renovations and to open a business." The final comment that we did foresee, and we checked all the way up until 10 minutes before the meeting, I just checked again, there has been no other comments. So the final comment is from Harold Christ. He's the owner of the Windmill Winery in town. He says, "If I understand Cares money correctly, an earmarked portion is to be spent on public safety payroll. The balance can be used in a discretionary manner. If that is correct, here are the items I would like the Cares Fund spent on. Number one, hire a full-time economic development director with verifiable track record. Our sister cities such as Eloy, Coolidge, Casa Grande and Maricopa all have one. Number two, several of the remaining businesses in Florence will not be reopening. I suggest two things. Sit down with all the small businesses and see if they could remain in business if they had some financial help. Then set up a low-interest loan to assist them stay in business. Second, meet with the owners of the buildings along Main Street and see if similar low-interest loans would get them to bring their buildings up to code and then be able to either rent or sell their building to a user. Number three, here is one I would like to see no more money spent on, fighting the copper mine. Let's not spend another dime to fight the battle that has already been lost. Counsel and staff are a bright group. Sit down and figure out a way to get away from throwing good money after bad. It is true that the town has spent over $3 million fighting the mine and has not won one suit. This does not sound like a good business plan to me. Four, set aside substantial amount of these funds to be used to promote and enhance the image of Florence. Site selectors will never tell us when they are searching for a site. They will move on to a site that shows pride and ownership. Without forward thinking, that includes vision of what we can be, will remain as is. Florence is a very special place, but needs a cleaning up badly. The town needs signage at all entry points, starting at I-10. I really enjoy Florence, and I have made a substantial investment here. You have house money to use to enhance what we as taxpayers have been supporting. Please make wise decisions on how to spend dollars you have been given."
That is the end of the comments that were received by the clerk's office. Thank you very much. I want everybody to know that has submitted feedback, that it's very much appreciated. And if you did not make, you know, it in this evening, I encourage you to still send in that feedback, and it will be made available to council and public as well. Our next item is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is Resolution Number 174220. This is approval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, adopting the service agreement between the Educational Services Incorporated and the Town of Florence, effective July 1, 2020. Item B is approval of a lease, lessie resolution to provide a lease slash purchase of a schedule of equipment, number one dated April 3, 2020, to master equipment lease purchase agreement dated June 1, 2020, between Community First National Bank as Lessor and Town of Florence Lessie. Item C is approval of change, number five, task one for Westland Resources, for the Post Imbute Preserve Project On Call Engineering. Item D is adoption of the 2020-2021 Capital Improvement Plan. And item C is approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending April 30, 2020, in the amount of $2,179,040.16. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there any member of our council that would like any item removed at this time?
No.
I would like to have a motion approving the consent agenda, removing item D at this time.
I motion to approve tonight's consent agenda with the removal of item D.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. The reason why I removed this item is I just wanted to make two significant points to everybody that's here this evening. First, I'm very proud of our staff for moving forward so aggressively in regards to grants. I totaled from pages two and pages three, $3,499,578 in grant items. So I want to say that was a great job, and I know that's only part of our CRP, that's not even our general budget. The other part I wanted to bring out, especially with Mr. Chris's comments earlier, we're working really hard in regards to cleaning up our downtown. As many of you know, we had moved our recycling station over by Heritage Park, and since, you know, that time a few years back, every week, it seems, we're fighting that never-ending battle of people, you know, filling it up, and then we have to have additional dumps. We purchased the land across from Public Works, building an eco station, and as you can see on page five, we have that eco station moving forward. And the purpose of this is the containment of disposable containers, relocate and beautify the downtown area with management and control of those materials. So I just wanted to make that known to our audience. Other than that, I don't have any questions or clarifications. So with that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Thank you. Item 8A is new business, discussion approval and disapproval, which I don't, you know, to accept the bid from Jams Crafts to use the Silver King Marketplace Suite 201 as a retail fabric store, and authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement. Ms. Jennifer Evans?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, back in late March, the town issued a request for proposals for Suite 201 in the Silver King Hotel, and that process closed on April 27th. During that time, the town council approved a new lease policy, and so we had one response to that request for proposal, and that was Ms. Anita Jamless from Jams Crafts. And that, Ms. Jamless sells fabric and notions online, and she wishes to expand her business into a storefront, and so she submitted a proposal for Suite 201. And so this evening, according to the policy, the new lease policy, we're asking the town council to approve that use, which is compatible with the zoning in the area and with neighboring uses. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we also have Ms. Jamless here to answer any of your questions as well.
Excellent. Would you like to come up, ma'am?
Well, she's on her way up. Jennifer, can you answer for me real fast? Is the extension going to be completed before she, if approved, before she took occupancy?
Just before, we're, we are shooting for July 1 occupancy there, and then the project's supposed to be completed by June 30.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council members. Good evening. My name is Anita Jamless. I am the owner of Jams Crafts, and I've been selling fabrics online for the past 12 years. It's a home-based business, small business, and I think I'm looking for space in town to expand my business as an alternative. I will still have the online business, and now I need to start a brick-and-mortar shop. Thank you.
You know, I love that, and I do find a lot of our business owners that also complement their business with online, and especially you're already starting from an online platform, bringing it to a brick-and-mortar. They have a lot more opportunity to be successful with those shops, and the seasonal impact does not, you know, it's not as much. We also have, as Councilmember Wall pointed out earlier, I'll let you go ahead and share that sentiment.
I was just really excited to see the proposal for your shop. Where I live in Sun City, we have one of the largest quilting groups in the state that is very active, and I know they will all be excited to see your shop open here in Florence, and hopefully they'll bring you a lot of business there.
Thank you.
Thank you. What will your hours be?
It will be from 8 to 3. We'll still open from, if you need it, from 9 to 4.
Excellent.
I can do that as well.
Will you have Saturdays as well?
Yes, I can open on weekends as well, except for Sunday.
Absolutely. Any other council members have questions? Councilmember Larson?
I was just going to comment that, little-known fact, I used to make custom kids' clothes before I moved here, and I actually stopped doing my business when I moved here because I found that I couldn't buy fabric that I needed without having to drive all the way to the metro. In my line of work, or what I did, it was almost impossible for me to make it financially feasible. So something like this is really exciting for me, but it gives me an opportunity to possibly come down and start sewing again. So personally, I'm very excited for this opportunity.
I, I'm just excited because you have a proven track record already, because even though online businesses, you know, it seems to be the way things are going, it's even more competitive online than it is brick-and-mortar, because everybody can sell, you know, there's all these people, but I really like the fact that you have what appears to be some exclusive contracts with some of these fabric makers. So people have to come to you to find these unique fabrics. So I really appreciated that you are coming in with an already established business, and this is just going to be an extension, maybe even of just your shipping room, and kind of maybe clean out that craft room in your house. So I'm excited to see your business grow in this space and see how successful you'll be.
All right. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm glad to see that you're doing both, the online business as well as the retail outlet. I know my wife hates online. She likes to see and feel her merchandise. So I think that's going to bring you a lot of people in that will come in, check it out, see what you got, and then go online. I think this is going to complement your online business very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I once had a shop in the space that you're going to be using, so it's a great spot.
All right. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the use of the Silver King Marketplace Suite 201 as a retail fabric store, and authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Welcome to Florence.
Welcome.
And the Silver King. Item number B is discussion and possible action on the current town owed commercial property leases. Ms. Garcia?
Mayor and members of council, at recent meetings, we have discussed not only the new lease, but the way the town of Florence is treating current property leases and tenants during the COVID-19. So we just wanted to bring back formally and address this and show you what we're doing. So the total amount waived by the town of Florence during the COVID-19, when we asked everyone to be closed, was $2,371.15. What this was is we closed businesses from March 19th, basically through May 17th, and all businesses that are currently in the Silver King are month-to-month. They are not on the new lease. The business that we just approved will be on the new lease. So we wanted to remind council, the business we just approved will get a 10% discount during summer months. That 10% is not in our current leases. Staff will bring back to council a update in October to make sure that we have, our economy has recovered before we go into those new leases as requested, and at that time, we will negotiate and enter into leases with all new, all of the businesses that are currently there. Those will not require to go before council, because our new policy authorizes the town manager to enter into leases once the use is acceptable by council. And so we just wanted to bring this back, because there seemed to be quite a lot of discussion. We wanted to make sure that we hit all of the points, and if we still have things we need to talk about, or if council wants to go in another direction, we would like to receive your input. direction, we would like to receive your input.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation, council. Do you have any questions on that?
And if there's no action wanted or necessary, then we can move on to the next item. As I said, the waiver of fees was $2,371. That is for both the Silver King and the Brunen Camp. That was for March 19th through May 17th. And they are currently month to month until November 1st.
What I want to point out is, first and foremost, how this agenda item made it onto our agenda. This transpired because of communication that occurred. One of our local business owners reached out and said, hey, you know, I understand that you guys have had this study since last November in regards to the rent. I understand that we have a, you know, a great deal on rent, especially on a main street. But the timing of what happened was just not, not good in regards to moving forward with the new leases. So I said, well, anything that can be done can be relooked at because we're a board and we work with our businesses, we work with our community. So let's bring it back forward. Let's find out what we can do. Staff did a great job of putting together all of this information. And it shows what we've done, what we want to do. I think that it is beneficial to both our businesses, our community, and our town to do everything that we can in regards to keeping these businesses in place. They've been here for quite some time in the Silver King already. They, they want to make it through this, and I'd like to help. I'd like to be part of that solution. So with that on the table is not putting the new lease in effect, waiting until October to revisit. And at that time, we may continue this direction on. We, we will figure out what, what happens at that time, given the data, based on what is going on in our community and in our state at that time. Councilmember Wall?
Couple of things. I personally think that we should have waived rent clear through the end of May because if, if tenants were allowed to reopen on May 17th, I would be willing to to venture that they won't be up and running full bore until at least today or maybe even later. So prorating for less than half of a month to me, I, I would like us to waive clear through the end of May.
Businesses were actually eligible to open on May 6th, and then after that date, the manager gave them another 17 days on top of that.
Jen, do you remember if anybody actually opened on the 6th?
And then, and so it was, it was actually 25 days that would have been paid for. And so they would have paid for five days. We can go back and look at that. And if council wants to go ahead and waive the month of May, we'll make sure we do that.
That would be my, my desire. The other thing is, I would be, I would suggest that we also allow the summer 10% rate reduction for those three months, June, July, and August. We all know that businesses generally slacked off during the summer, and I think that's something else that we could be doing.
I agree with everything.
Personal opinion.
Yeah, I agree with everything that Karen said.
I do, I do as well.
I have, this $2,371.15, for some reason in my mind, the annual rent that we collect, I thought was less than $7,000.
That's for, that is for the Brunen Camp building as well as the two suites. That's what was waived. We already had a notice from what's upstairs. And so they were already, and we did extend their time for them to leave just because we couldn't allow for people to come and pick up their items during COVID-19.
Right. But for technically then, three spaces.
Three spaces.
We're saying that we waived $2,300. And I thought for all our spaces, we were under $7,000 for the annual rent that was collected. So I'm trying to figure out how for two months, we came up with $2,300 for three spaces. That's meaning they're each paying six, what, $600? No. How much, how much a month?
It would be basically for the two months during that time. I'd be happy to send you the spreadsheet.
That, yeah, because I know either, either we've been incorrect somewhere else where we've said what the annual rent is, or this number might be off.
I will, I will send you the spreadsheet. And we're keeping track of how much we do collect because as part of the COVID-19 funding, we can go back in and put this into, and it may or may not be reimbursed. And so we would be happy to share our spreadsheet with you.
Yeah, because that'd be over $700 a month per, per those three spaces. And I can guarantee you right now that I know one of them does not pay anywhere near $700.
Yeah, I'll go back in, review the numbers that were provided, and we'll get out that spreadsheet to council.
Yeah. And then I, I support what Karen said as far as just waiving them all through, through May, what's five more days. I thought it started on the 17th, too. The way I read it is that they were only waived through the 17th. So I'm not sure where my confusion came in on that. And it's actually that they got waived all except for five days. Well, it's five days, we might as well just give that to them. And then on the 10%, Karen, you're saying that off of what their current rate is to still extend the 10%. And I, I support that as well.
Do we want to hold off or table this until she can get the right numbers for us?
No, I have the right numbers. They're correct. I will share, share the spreadsheet with you.
Of what each space is paying?
Yes. Mm-hmm. On how much. And I misspoke because what's upstairs was still in their lease. So they did have a month that they were also received the funding as well. So it's four spaces, not three.
So still over $500. Okay.
Madam Mayor, may I ask one more question? Are we saying that if we waive these rents, the additional rents or what we've already waived, that we could reimburse the town for that waiver through the CARES funding?
Through FEMA.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Wall, there's actually two different sets of funding, if you can picture it. We've got the CARES funding on one side, which we discussed previously. And then we have the FEMA funds, which are distributed through the state, through FEMA, the State Department of Emergency Management. It's about $150 million. We, we all get emails about it every week, but there's about $150 million that's been designated by FEMA to be distributed by FEMA, the state, through an online portal. There are specific guidelines in terms of things that can be reimbursed if submitted by the town. Carl, I think, is here tonight, and we will be making our, our submission to FEMA for our part of the 150 million. One of the things that is on their list is rent relief. So we will be trying to submit that. There's no guarantee that we will get funding for that, but that's, that's something that we can submit.
Thank you. That even makes my suggestion stronger.
The other side of the equation is, for the CARES funding, similarly, just like we talked about earlier, there are a whole litany of things that that can be used for. Our submission for funding, as Ben said earlier, is very specific in terms of our justification for that funding, primarily expenditures on payroll for emergency services from the middle of, of March through December 31st. So our submission for funding will include all that data. But one of the reasons we had the public hearing earlier is those funds can be spent on other ancillary items as well. One of the things that council could consider as part of those ancillary items would be that rent relief piece. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So Mayor, members of council, after you make your motion, we will, what we will do is we will attach certified copies of the minutes to each one of the property owner's lease, or the tenant's leases. And we will make sure that we go through and do that rather than to have a signed agreement. We can just add a certified copy of the minutes.
So if I'm hearing correctly, based on our conversations, we are looking for full waiver, yeah, waiver. I made a new word. Full waiving of the month of May in regards to rent to Silver King and adding an additional 10% during the summer months, summer months being identified as June, July, August?
It would be not just the Silver King, both of our buildings that we?
It would be all of our town buildings, yes.
Well, you said to the Silver King. That's why I was making that correction.
The Silver King and Brunen Camp.
Yeah.
And we'd want to add a discount. Instead of saying additional 10%, we are going to discount to 10%. We'll correct the, we'll correct the motion.
Okay.
With that, I will make a motion that we waive the entire month of May in rent for town-owned properties, and also that we provide a 10% rate reduction for the months of June, July, and August for town-owned tenant, town-owned building tenants.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number C is Resolution 1741-20, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, adopting the Town of Florence Fiscal Year 2020, 2021 Employee Compensation and Classification Plans.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you is a resolution to approve the Fiscal Year 2021 Employee Compensation Classification Plan. Each year, this item comes before the council to approve the resolution to make changes to the classification plan. We looked at several positions as to their competitiveness to the market. So the following positions that are listed are either being added or taken away from the classification plan to keep the competitiveness of our plan in place. So if there are no questions or you need further explanation, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Vice Mayor?
Yes. You know, we, we go through this each year, looking at these categories. How do you feel overall? Are we getting close to where all our categories are in line with what we think they should be?
Well, I think that there should be some adjustment to the classification plan. And that's another item that is on the agenda for later on for further discussion. So there should be some adjustments. But these are positions that have been open for a long period of time that we've had extreme issues with getting applicants for. So there was some urgency in getting them reclassified so that we could be competitive with the market to draw people who are qualified for these positions.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I want to say I appreciate your work in comparing us to other municipalities that meet our similar demographics and ensuring that we are moving and being competitive with those around us.
Thank you, Mayor.
With those items, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1741-20.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is item D. This is approval, disapproval, discussion of the Town of Florence hosting the 2020 Michelle Gallagher Virtual Softball Tournament with all proceeds being used for youth programs. Ms. Allison, please. Pretty excited about this.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Every year, the Michelle Gallagher Foundation throws a softball tournament. Unfortunately, this year, they weren't unable to because of COVID-19. They are very supportive of all of our recreation programs and the Little League, as well as very many other programs in the Florence community. So we tried to get a little bit creative and come up with an opportunity to continue, help them continue their program during this difficult time and continue to support the kids in our, in our community. So Michelle Gallagher was a lifelong Florence resident, and she contributed very much to the Little League program. And in, in her honor, her family has created the foundation to try and just continue kids who might not be able to participate in some youth programming. So that's what the foundation is there to, to do. And Bebo is going to kind of walk you through the virtual tournament and how we kind of foresee it taking place.
Give me a second. I got to sign in here. Got signed out. Okay. Mayor, council, this is, like Gally was saying, we're trying to do a virtual softball tournament. Everything's pretty much virtual right now. So the way we're going to run it, we'll do like any of our programs, two-week registration period for this program. We're going to try to, we're going to, with the help of the Michelle Gallagher Foundation volunteers, reach out to their past participants who, who actually played in the tournament and possibly reach out to new, you know, departments or any teams, anybody who wants to put a team together. There'll be a $100 team registration fee. This will be a bracket-style, single elimination tournament. If you guys are familiar with tournaments, one-time-year-out, single elimination. Teams will go head-to-head each week, Thursday to Wednesday. The team that raises the most, the most money during that timeframe, when they're going head-to-head, will be declared the winner, and they will move on to the next round, until there's a champion. Winners will be announced via social media each week on our town Facebook page. We'll try to get creative and make it like a sports cast. So we're going to do something like that on, on our town Facebook page. And until there's a winner, like, like I said. See if I can sign in here. As you can see, we have our new program, too, if you guys aren't aware. Everybody could look away, not looking at my password. Okay. You guys, you guys got that on your screen?
Yeah.
So this is our new civic rec, like I was saying. So what's going to happen? We have it here in our catalog. Teams will register, like I said, $100. We made up some team names right here. Florence Rec Game Crew, and we kind of made that up right there. So the way it's going to work, teams, when they're registering, they'll promote their team to help, you know, if you guys would like to donate to our team. As you can see, we did baseball, softball, singles $5, doubles $10, triples $15. And like I said, the team, each week, will be declared the winner. So there's a champion. Is there any questions on this?
When, when is it going to start?
Once it's approved, we'll start moving forward and possibly July? Mid-July, want to try to get it out there, market it, and try to, at least by July, get it out and get it going.
Well, and that makes sense because right now, we have our, our masked run going on from June to July. So then July, this could be our next.
Yep.
How will they pay? Credit card or what?
Yeah, so what we're going to do, we'll set up the links. We'll send it to each team captain. They can distribute it amongst, you know, their people. And we'll also put the links out each week when we, you know, we say who's playing who. Florence Mud Ducks versus Florence Rec and Crew. We'll put the links on our social media page to each, um, single, double. So it's all, it's all online, so.
Councilmember Larson?
Just to add on to that, so it will all be on Facebook as far as they'll just click on a team that they want to support, and then they can make the payment right there. Is it going to send them a website?
Directly, like you're looking at it right there.
They'll have to log in, create a username and password. So say that there's somebody's cousin lives in Ohio, and they just want to give them money. Do they have means to, say, make that payment? Are we going to be accepting payments other ways besides doing it this way where they have to have a username and? where they have to have a username and password?
Uh, this is the only way we'll be doing it, unless they could zill each other money.
Yeah, if they just want to take payment, they could probably process that on there, I suppose.
What, can we call, yeah, call in then?
Call it in?
They can call in to us.
Uh-huh.
Okay, fantastic, so maybe put that information.
How much does it cost to strike someone out?
What was that?
How much does it cost to strike someone out?
Oh, uh, we're trying to figure that out. When we came up, we were coming up with this, but we're, it was going to be too hard to figure out taking money away from a team. I didn't want to.
No, not taking money away. If I want to say it costs $10 to get somebody off their base.
Um, I, I don't know.
I think we're going positive with this, Michelle.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, I have.
Well, somebody is paying, you know, $15 for a triple, or a grand slam for $25, or a homerun for 20, and somebody else comes with a strikeout. What happens? You strike out a homerun?
You just raise more money.
The bottom line is the one who raises the most money wins. And the Town Hall Administration is putting out a formal challenge to vote the mayor, town council members, to start your own team, as well as all members of staff. And we're looking forward to winning.
Do you have a cap on how many teams you're going to be able to take?
We're thinking 10 to 12. So this is the first time doing it, so we'll cap it at 12 teams if we do get that. I know they usually average 10 teams every season, every tournament. So hopefully, we could get all those past participants, and then, like I said, new ones, so.
Is there any limitation on how many people can be on a team?
Uh, it depends on, on who's the team manager. So it's pretty much, like the way softball tournaments usually work, baseball tournaments, everybody pitches in for a team. So they could be, they could have as many people as they want.
I was thinking responding to, you know, if they have family back east that want to be on the team and contribute.
Yeah.
That way they could do it.
Is there going to be a roster for each team so that their names will appear on the, the website?
Well, that, they may go with, with how we sports cast. We may say like, so-and-so hit a grand slam. We'll try to be creative, you know, with the, um, when, because we'll see who donated because they'll have to create an account. So we'll try to be creative as far as, like, you know, you know, Ally hit two grand slams today versus the Mud Ducks. So we'll try to be creative as far as that point, aspect.
Do we have a way? And I've seen this, and I don't know how this was created. Our athletic director at one of our FUSD K-8 schools created challenges of like, you know, Anthem K-8 versus Florence K-8. And they played virtual matches. It was during the COVID, during quarter four, when they couldn't play basketball. And I don't know what program they used, but they actually played virtual games. So I don't know if they plugged in stats or how that was done, but I can put you in contact if you'd be interested in that.
We could try that, we could look into that.
Okay. That could be interesting, just to watch it all play out.
Yeah, it would be interesting.
All right, I'm excited. I think that you guys put a lot of thought and a lot of effort into this. I think this is a great opportunity, especially with Michelle Gallagher. You know, the foundation has provided so much for so many of our youth, and this is just a great way to continue to keep her memory and her legacy alive in Florence. So if there's no further discussion or questions, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Town of Florence hosting the 2020 Michelle Gallagher Virtual Softball Tournament.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
This will be fun. And also, if you haven't already signed up for the Mud Run, or not Mud Run, the Masked Run, go ahead and sign up. It's $15 and a lot of fun. Parks and Rec doing great things. Item number E is Discussion and Possible Consideration for a reallocation of $5,000 from the Town Council budget. Ms. Lisa Garcia. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to you.
Mayor, Members of Council, during the budget work session, we talked about the $5,000 that would not be spent on the Florence High School lock-in. This is coming back to you with concepts. You said you like to do something for youth scholarships, and you would like to do something for the business community. We have offered you several different options, or will, would be happy for you to recommend a different option. First option is $1,000 in youth scholarships and $4,000 in business license relief. What this would be is 10 scholarships at $100 each. It would be through an essay contest, and we would invite in the Michelle Gallagher Foundation to help select the winners. The winners would come before council. The money could be used on any type of activity, not just sports programs, activities of interest that they write their essay about. It could be inside the town or outside the town. Right now, the, the programs that we're offering is very limited. They would have one year to be able to expend their money. So if they were interested in science, maybe they want a membership to the Phoenix Science Center, and they could put in to be able to do that. We've opened that wide up to just not be sports, all programming. If the council, council chose to do this, it would provide relief to 100 businesses, a $40 reimbursement for their business license. This would be brick and mortar businesses located within the Town of Florence city limits only. Your options, just go ahead and offer more scholarships, 25 scholarships at $100 each. And then if we did that, it would be a $25 reimbursement to 100 businesses, trying to match that amount of $5,000.
All right. I appreciate that presentation, Council. Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to start off and say, I do like the option of doing the business license relief. I think that, to me, is a given for the 2,500. But when it comes to the youth activities scholarships, I'd like to see some small changes and up for discussion, of course. But I believe it should be like up to $100, so we could have an, maybe not so much an essay competition, but where they tell us what organization or everything that they want to be involved in. They should still write, can still write an essay, whether we could provide maybe up to a certain dollar amount per child. And that way, maybe we could reach more people. Because if we're allocating $100 for one activity per child, maybe it doesn't even cost that $100. How would, and how would that money be dispersed? As far as, is it going to be given directly to the families?
No, we would actually make the payment in the child's name.
To the organization?
So if I use the Science Center, we would actually, if they wanted to have, their dream was to have a membership to the Science Center, and it was $85, we would make the payment in the child's name for $85 to the Science Center.
Okay. Yeah, I like the idea of it being up to $100 and possibly reaching more children that way. That's really all I could think of off the top of my head.
Any other questions from council or comments?
I have a question.
Councilmember Wall?
Do we have 100 brick and mortar businesses in town?
When you go in and you take the brick and mortar businesses, we do. We can provide a list if the council would so like.
I like, I like either option. I mean, I'm not really like on the fence with either one of them. The only thing, I think it would be hard if we said up to a dollar amount because how do, it's hard to know how much we have then to give or how many kids we would be able to. And if we end up with 10 bucks left over, that's just 10 bucks versus just saying, and I mean, can you even find a program that's that, that's under $100 these days? I haven't had to put my kids in sports for a while or any activity. My kid likes video games, so those are usually more than $100 to enter one of those competitions. So I don't know, I, I mean, I like being able to serve more kids, but I want our businesses to also benefit from this money, so. I don't know. I think, I think it would be better for the town if we just pick one and then staff manages how that money is actually given. You know, if you do get two kids from the same family and it's only 50 bucks, then those two kids could share that $100 or something like that. I think that would work too. I just think it'll be hard if we start saying up to $100, and somebody's got 60, and say somebody's got one that's 110, or, you know, like, it'd be hard to start to manage all those different numbers versus just saying, this is what you get.
Well, so I have three kids, and all three of my kids are always actively in different sports, whether it's soccer, football, basketball, gymnastics, dance. Anyhow, there's all different funding. So when I'm looking at, you know, planning things out, if I know, say, dance is going to be $45 a month, well, rather than, you know, taking up a $100 scholarship, maybe I'm just taking up 45, and then that will allow Johnny over here, 65, to go play baseball. So we're reaching more kids. And it's, in the grand picture, right now, we have a $1,000 scholarship on the table. So it's just, you know, bringing it down and allocating the amount up to 100, I like.
Well, if we do that, we need to take out the number of scholarships. It's going to be 10, it could be 15, 20, but we're just going to say. The town can max out a $1,000 each scholarship, only to $100.
I like that, I do. And then I also want to remind people too, because it ties in with our last agenda item, Michelle Gallagher, her foundation has truly given so much to the youth of our community. And I know that whenever there's a child that wants to engage in a sport activity, her foundation is the first to step up and cover the costs and take care of the child. So, you know, we also have other opportunities that we can, you know, partner with. I also know another organization in our community, Paladin Sports. They've also been in conversations lately in regards to, they provide scholarships to youth. And I talked with Ty about this agenda item and said, hey, this is something that we're part, you know, we're preparing. And he said, you know, wanting to have additional conversations with council, we can partner, we can work together. Granted, that's not what's on our agenda item this evening. I just want to say there's, there's other organizations and other foundations that are in the community. And if everybody does a little bit to help and support our kids, then we're going to be able to provide these opportunities for them.
Lisa, what are the requirements for the businesses to qualify other than brick and mortar? Or is it just if you're brick and mortar?
Yeah, if you're, if you're brick and mortar and you offer a service, we did prepare a list of those businesses that were closed. We went through it, wanted to make sure that everyone that was located within the city limits of the Town of Florence would be able to, we couldn't do a full reimbursement, but what we can do is provide a specific dollar amount off of their business license. And of course, we would send out a nice letter from the mayor and town council telling them that it's a token of our appreciation and that we support them during the COVID-19 pandemic.
So if you were a business that didn't have to close because you were considered essential, then are you?
We have offered it to everyone that is brick and mortar inside of the city limits. So if you had a business in Casa Grande, but you have to have a business license in the Town of Florence, you would, would not qualify for the discount. It would be for those businesses that are located within the city limits of Florence.
Councilmember Larson?
How, the $40 relief, does that cover the entire expense that the business owner paid?
It does not.
How much is it?
50?
It depends on what type of business that you have. There's variations within the Business License Code of the Town of Florence. But if you have a standard business license, it is $50. But each person would receive the same discount, no matter how much a business license costs.
Can we pull, like, can we see which one we're supporting more? So then we can make a motion to either approve or that, particularly Option A or Option 1 or Option 2?
And Option 3 is whatever council would like to put on the table. So you can modify an option, you can do all scholarships, you can do all business license. Really, whatever the council wants to do. We were just challenged to come up with some ideas with scholarships and business license relief in mind, so this is what we brought back.
I think you did a great job in coming up with this.
And I, I do want to say one more thing because Michelle Gallagher Foundation was actually also part of this item too. So I'd like to go back to the last one and make sure council understands that through our fundraiser, the Town of Florence will receive 50% of the money, and the Michelle Gallagher Foundation will receive 50% of the money raised. So it'll be a 50-50 split. And Michelle Gallagher Foundation does support scholarships for local youth, as well as Little League and other programs. So we would be sharing that money and helping to supplement them since they are unable to go forward with their tournament. And also to note that the Michelle Gallagher Foundation has provided $12,000 worth of scholarships to the Town of Florence in prior years.
That's incredible. Councilmember Wall?
I, I personally support Option 2 because I, I like the idea of giving more scholarships for the youth. If our business license maximum is $50, then this would also give 50% rebate on that business license, which I think is a fair amount.
I agree, I like Option 2.
Also, 2.
I like 2 with the stipulations about it. Like I said, the essay competition, maybe opening it up. Do we have a deadline for this competition or?
Could we make it not so much a competition? And maybe just like an application, even along the line, and I'll let you speak.
We are going to work with the very talented people in the Parks and Recreation Program that just spoke earlier, and we're going to flesh all that out and put it out to the street.
Okay. I do, I like tying it to education, especially since our kiddos have been out of school since March 6th. But I was thinking along the lines of, you know, hi, my name is Ally. I really enjoy playing softball. There's a league that plays in Santan, and they are going to start back up in the fall. The cost is, you know, $95, and I would appreciate your support. Just something short and sweet and apparent signature.
We're, we're happy to do that, we're happy to open it up. I forget, life's not really a competition.
No.
But, you know.
It is.
It's fun, if it is.
Life is definitely a competition.
I would hope that if we get 30 applications, that they come back, you'd come back and say, hey, we want to kick it out for something, you know?
And, and we definitely plan on asking and inviting those who write letters to come to the council meeting so that you can see and we can have them come up and say, you know, what, what they received their scholarship for.
And John, I liked how you brought that up. If there's 30 kids that apply altogether, you know, maybe we can partner with that Michelle Gallagher Foundation that already contributes to us and find a way to make sure that all 30 kids are supported. All right, with that, we need a motion. It sounds like we're ready to go with number 2 as an option, if somebody would like to make that.
A motion that we approve the reallocation of $5,000 from the Town Council budget, going with Option 2, $2,500 for youth scholarships and $2,500 for business license relief.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And thank you, staff, you have certainly risen to that challenge. Item number F is Discussion and Possible Consideration of an Increase in Employee Compensation for Fiscal Year 2020-2021. Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, last week, we held a budget session on May 26th. As part of the discussions at that session, council asked us to come back with some options of what compensation might look like with respect to our employees in the forthcoming budget. Three different options have been provided. The first option would be a scale adjustment of 2.5%. So to explain what a scale adjustment is, each employee that works for the town would essentially receive a 2.5%. town would essentially receive a two point five percent increase. But also the scale of every position would increase one step, which is where the two point five percent comes from. So that it is not necessarily just a raise for the employee, it also increases, uh, their step, uh, inside the range and then they, they keep their relative status, uh, inside the range. So it addresses, uh, the questions that council member Cortez was asking at the last meeting about what happens if you have employees that are at the top of their range, that's not an issue, uh, i-in, in this particular scenario. The second scenario is a stipend. To re-explain what a stipend is, stipend is not a raise. Uh, stipend is a one-time payment. Uh, what's being proposed is, is a three percent stipend. Uh, council has approved stipends, uh, and did so, um, I believe in the year twenty-fourteen and in the year twenty-fifteen. So, uh, the employees' salary in the forthcoming year would not be adjusted, the retirement for that employee would not be adjusted, think of it as essentially a bonus payment, uh, for each employee. The last option was brought forward by Vice Mayor Anderson, which was a cost of a living, uh, adjustment that would be tied annually to a national standard. There's a lot of different national standards, uh, that could be, uh, utilized for that, uh, but seeing what, what time it is, I, I will stop and answer any questions if, if there are any. I'm trying to honor the eight, eight o'clock curfew.
I would like to say that I did check out the, uh, cost of living that social security used, they used the, the Department of Labor Price Index and it was two point eight percent last year. They announced Thursday, this year it's gonna be one point six percent. And, you know, I like the idea of us assuring that we're going to keep our pay scales in line with the cost of living. If we need to do adjustments, we can do that also, but, uh, I think, uh, tying the cost of living, uh, into that and also use that cost of living as a say to raise the categories automatically each year.
So are you, I just want to clarify, because I don't fully understand what you said, I apologize. Are you saying the scale adjustment and the cost of living?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm saying, I would like to see us have a policy or code that we do the cost of living automatically every year.
Okay, I, I think that's valuable to stay competitive with what's going on in our world.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Larson?
I know, uh, one of the discussion points that we had had was that you were gonna check with other municipalities that we, um, use for our skills. You got me, all right?
It's.
Uh, that research is included in the background in the packet.
That, that really didn't go that well.
Correct.
Gets a lot of responses.
A-and we anticipated that. It's, uh, everybody is, is worried about what's happening financially and everybody is keeping everything close to the vest.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think everybody is, is concerned. Nobody really know, none of us know where we're at. We don't, it's hard to budget for, you don't know if you're gonna have a job tomorrow, basically, to put it in simpler terms. I personally, if, if we're picking and we're saying that we're gonna move forward with this, I personally like the scale adjustment because we know what we're, what it's gonna be every year, which makes it easier to, um, budget for that. Where if we do the cost of living, one year it could be one point five and then the next year it could be four percent. But if we stay consistent and we move, we won't be outpaced that much by the cost of living because the cost of living slides back and forth as it is. So one year, we might be given a two point five and cost of living is only, is below two percent, so we're above the cost of living. And then the next year, we might be under it, but they kind of even out and wash each other.
So are you saying you want to see something along the lines of a policy put into place in regards to two point five percent every year?
Mm-hmm, and that it, and it would raise the sca, the, the scale, everything would adjust together because that way, nobody ever caps out. But that's like my biggest concern is when you have an employee that caps out, they don't get a raise. Their retirement doesn't increase, so all their hard work and dedication to this town after fifteen years doesn't get compensated because they don't get it unless we give a stipend. Well, a stipend is a great thing, it's a bonus, but it doesn't help their retirement. And ultimately, I think everybody would prefer their retirement be boosted because that's what they have to live on once they leave this town. So I, I would prefer us do something that helps their retirement grow, but I'm uneasy at doing something that we don't know year to year what that amount is gonna be. And it's easy, if we know the set amount, it's easier to budget for it.
That almost sounds to me like we're having a conversation about what would be called in the school system or in other municipalities, for every department, that step system where every year you have that increase that you go. And then at the end of your career, you're maxed out and you're retired. Am I understanding you correctly?
So from staff's perspective, uh, we've evaluated the different options, let me give you a little input. Uh, our preference would be option one, which is a scale adjustment to, to, once again, uh, move up all of our employees by one step for cost competitiveness, recruitment, uh, et cetera. Uh, once again, the two and a half percent, uh, would be one step, uh, from a step twenty-three to a step twenty-four, uh, if you're a maintenance worker, uh, et cetera. It's feasible, uh, it's, it's something that, uh, especially, uh, i-if, if we look at how these increases take place and the fact that we already have a bu, a, a budget deficit of over one point five million dollars, uh, something that makes sense, uh, to give our folks an increase, give them a step, uh, as well as raise, uh, the overall, uh, how do you want to say, the, the top level on their position by that two point five percent, so we don't have anybody who's, who's, uh, maxed out, uh, if you will. Stipends, for all the reasons, uh, that were said earlier, uh, they make sense in a severe, uh, financial environment, and I'm not saying that we aren't in one, in that those costs don't carry forward, uh, into future years. The problem with cost of living is it causes compression within the scale. Uh, so a cost of living increase on its own will cause, uh, compression within each all, each of the positions over time if we don't have a way and a basis to increase, uh, each of those positions and their relative positions and adjust the scales, uh, on an annualized basis. The, the challenge that, that we have with the step protocol is, uh, a, a step protocol from an ICMA perspective is not preferable because you end up in a position that's not adjustable going forward. Step systems are typically used in unionized environments where there's a guaranteed increase year by year. That becomes difficult from a budget management standpoint and from a policy standpoint whereby if you set up a step system and then the next council comes in the next year for financial reasons and cancels that step system, it's a very difficult political road, uh, to follow. So typically from an ICMA, from a city management standpoint, we like to look at budgets individually. We like to look at increases to employees and how those increases, uh, occur to those employees on an annualized basis based on those, those revenue projections and, and where you fall within those, those budgets. We're already dipping into savings. Um, the, the challenge that exists here is we don't even have our revenue projections from the state yet, uh, and based on our assumptions, we're already one point five million in the hole. So all these discussions are, are very difficult. We do believe that the employees deserve it, uh, and we believe from a staff perspective that if we're going to make an adjustment, uh, the adjustment that adjusts the scale, uh, is the appropriate way to handle it from, from the city management perspective.
Am I understanding that you're saying that, uh, you would do a two point five percent each year, oh, in, in ten years, you'd be twenty-five percent?
Two point five percent this year with the scale adjustment.
Oh, so.
Not, not every year, no, that would be a step-type program.
Okay, so, all right.
I, I would just like to add, if you go back to your item, item C, and you can actually look at the scale, what you'll see is when we talk about a scale adjustment on that very first page, if you look at like, um, number fifty-nine, so a scale adjustment means everyone in a fifty-nine would go up to a sixty, but they would retain ownership in the range, which means they would receive the two and a half percent increase, but they would move up. Merit moves you across the scale towards the maximum amount. A range adjustment moves you up the scale. So your earning capacity earns higher, it makes us more competitive when we go out into the marketplace and we advertise positions because our starting range is higher.
So we would do away with merit increases?
If you were doing a range adjustment for this year, it means that there would not be a merit increase for this year, this coming year. But the current fiscal year, the employees did receive up to five percent.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a one-year discussion, just next year's budget.
Oh, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, councilmember?
Been trying to get a word in here for a few minutes. First of all, I, I think, um, we would be cutting off our nose despite our face if we put in a cost of living policy, um, especially in these uncertain times. Uh, there are so many different, um, standards for cost of living that, uh, tend to prejudice against small towns and in favor of large towns with very large budgets, which unfortunately we are not in that category. And, and we are premature on, on that discussion anyway, I think. I have a question about where that two and a half percent came from. Is that because the difference between each category is two and a half percent?
The difference between each step in our scale is two and a half percent. So a two-step adjustment is five percent.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
Pay grade.
Step fifty-nine to step sixty is two and a half percent.
Right. I'm just opposed to automatic increases. I think we either need a, a combination of a, uh, a scale adjustment and merit or one or the other. In this case, since we're not offered the option for merit, uh, I would have to agree with option one.
The, um, interesting thing is, is that from time to time, every city needs to go out and do a market-based comparison to make sure that they are competitive. Um, we, we would love to do this this year, we'd love to do it next year, it's just due to everything that's going on, we don't have the finances. So at least moving up one, one range and allowing everybody to go up is a little step in the right direction. But eventually, you are gonna have staff come back and ask for a market-based adjustment where we go out similar to how we did dispatch, similar how we did wastewater, and similar how we did the fleet supervisor, and actually go in and compare and put them properly on the scale. So that is something that you will see in the future.
Yeah, and just to add to my comments, uh, in light of the uncertainties for our, uh, revenue for this upcoming budget year, I would, I would be more in favor of a half year adjustment, uh, beginning on January first.
I would, I'm with Karen on that one.
I agree with everything that Karen said as far as, uh, scale adjustment. I did find it interesting that when you look at the editors, the four of them said that they were not giving a merit or cola for the next budget year, um, and that there were seven no responses. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, us doing any of these options, sounds like we'd be a step ahead of, of a lot of our competitors, as is.
So with that study, I do want to just go back one step. Our human resources director is an amazing wealth of resource and she's done a phenomenal job already in regards to the study for our dispatchers and water wastewater, the agenda item that we had earlier. If we can keep that in-house, that would be very much appreciated because I know those studies do cost money, so if we could keep it in-house with your knowledge and expertise, how do you feel about that?
The only problem with that is, is the number of positions and comparing all of them, um, it would be very difficult for one person to do that. When you hire a consulting group, they have an office full of assistants who assist in reaching out and doing the market research. Um, it takes many, many hours. It, I mean, honestly, the positions that I did, um, for just what I did took probably with everything else that I do, the better half of two months.
Well, that's good to know.
It just, it takes a long time to do this kind of thing. And with the number of positions that we have, it would be better, it would be better to hire someone to do it.
I appreciate that feedback.
I have an office of myself and one other person. It would be a huge endeavor to try to do that on my own. I appreciate your confidence, but it really would be better to hire it out.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And then Karen, if I heard you, councilmember Wall, if I heard you correctly, you are in favor of the two point five salary scale adjustment, is that correct?
Yes, and beginning January first.
What would that look like if we began January first? Because it's only for one year that we're doing this and I want to make sure nobody is left out.
All the numbers are included, uh, as part of option one for, for the half year, so that the impact would be a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven thirteen. Uh, the one caveat that I would add, uh, councilmember, if you're gonna make a motion, is that the folks that are being adjusted as part of the budget that have already been approved, they would not be part of this because their scale has already been increased commensurate with the study. Does that make sense? So wastewater, um, dispatchers and the fleet supervisor, their scale has already been increased, so they wouldn't receive this. Does that make sense?
Well, and also the new positions that are being authorized.
Correct, correct. Uh, that, that was what I was saying, if somebody's gonna make that motion, please put that in your motion, thank you.
So if I'm, if I get this right, um, I make a motion to use option one with the half year. The half year start at one thirty-four, seven, one, three. For full-time employees.
And exclude the adjustments that have already been approved by council.
And exclude the adjustments that still have already been approved by the council.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. All right, next up is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I, I have a few items that, uh, that I wanted to, to share with you this evening, I'm gonna go very quickly through them. Uh, first off, uh, I always have a COVID update, uh, at every meeting. The news has not been good, uh, from a COVID standpoint, if you've been watching the news. We've continually set, uh, set records over the last few days in terms of new cases in Arizona, uh, and have had by far the largest, uh, week of, of COVID cases that, since the outbreak started, uh, starting with last Thursday, there was five hundred and one new cases, Friday, seven hundred and two, Saturday, seven ninety, uh, and then an additional six eighty-one on, on Sunday. Uh, yes, there's more testing occurring, but, uh, the folks in the know believe that a lot of it has to do with people not social distancing, uh, and the fact that, that things are, are back open, uh, et cetera, that, that are adding, uh, to those individual cases. We have somewhat leveled off in Florence and we're experiencing about five new cases a day, uh, on average, uh, in Florence. The second, uh, item that I wanted to share and, and madam mayor, you mentioned something about this earlier, um, our success with grants. So we have a couple of grants, uh, that we're going to receive, uh, so these are good news items. The first one is, uh, we applied for and will be receiving what's called a Carers Express Grant. Uh, that is, is through the state libraries, uh, and we're gonna get delivery of fifteen new Chromebooks, uh, as well as a basic virtual engagement toolkit and three germ buster kits. as well as a basic virtual engagement toolkit and three Germbuster kits for the libraries and library programming. So it's, that's pretty exciting. I was looking for a dollar amount here of what that would be. Apparently, each Chromebook is $350. The virtual toolkit's $1,100. The engagement toolkit's $1,000. And the Germbuster kits are each $245 apiece. So congratulations to the library team for a job well done. The next item is something we've been tracking for the last couple of years. As you know, last year, we applied for a section, what's called an FTA Section 5310 grant specifically for our Give a Lift program. Last year, we applied and we did not receive the full grant for the amount that we had requested. We have been given a preliminary grant award through 5310 this year for our entire request. So that speaks to the quality of our program, the quality of our staff, and the success we've had with the Give a Lift program. So we will be getting our total award for capital of $5,400 and for operations of $45,050. Our local match will be $1,080 on the capital side and $22,525 on the operating side. So congratulations to Jennifer and, and the staff of our Give a Lift program. The last thing that I had is our own Chief Strayer, who I don't think is with, with us this evening. We always like to give kudos where kudos are due. Mr. Strayer was asked to actually give a presentation to the U.S. Ecuadorian Embassy regarding being a guest speaker for the Overseas Security Advisory Council with respect to our response to COVID-19 and, and the emergency here in Florence. So congratulations to Dave, and, and thank you goes out to the chief for, for his efforts in, in serving that function. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And also, Mr. Billingsley, this evening, we do have an executive session noticed. And prior to the meeting, just in regards to time, did you still want to move forward with rescheduling that meeting, or did you want to continue?
I talked to the chief earlier. The governor has set an 8 o'clock curfew. As a government entity, we would suggest that we honor that 8 o'clock curfew.
Thank you very much. Then we'll go ahead and reschedule that portion for another evening. Next, we have our department reports. Is there anybody who has any questions in regard to them? Next, we have our call to the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? Now we have our call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Wall?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Larson?
I think that right now, our, our state, our country is in such an unrest right now, and I just want to remind people that, you know, we're all human and that we should do all things with love and grace and seek first to understand and then to be understood. And those are some things I guess I'm just holding dear to me right now, so I just thought I'd share. We can lead positive influence on our communities, and I want to commend our police chief for leading by example and your community posts and being able to be so proactive and responsive to our needs. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hughes?
I want to thank the citizens that have, that stepped up and gave suggestions for the Arizona Cares Fund. And I just think it's really important for citizens to have their voice heard and that we remember that we do serve you. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cortez?
I keep forgetting to turn my mic on today. Well, you know, I just, I hope that everybody, not only thinks with their hearts, but thinks with their heads when deciding what to do during these times. It's a difficult decision on what you're going to do, but I trust that everybody will do things that will keep them safe and make your mama proud at the end of the day. I did want to point out though, real fast, while I was looking through this, there is a couple of cool things in the recreation center that, I know we don't have time to always highlight them, but the Post Imbute Preserve iSpy Hunt. So it appears that staff from Parks and Rec has placed some items in the Post Imbute Preserve area, and when you're out there looking, they would like for you to take photos of them and post them with the following hashtags. #FlorenceAZ, #FlorenceRec, #HomeRec, #VirtualRecReality. And then there are also some at Heritage Park as well, so that you could post those. I just think that's a great thing. Get out, clear your mind, and get some sunlight because that helps us all. I think everybody is a little COVID crazy right now, and rightfully so. Everybody is, none of us are used to being quarantined to our houses. We're used to having much more freedom than what we have right now. Other than that, as I said earlier, I just wish everybody the best and stay safe.
Vice Mayor?
Two things quickly. We have avoided bringing up the replacement of Bill Hawkins. I think we need to put that on the agenda and decide what we want to do. I'm not making any recommendations other than let's address the problem. You know, let's, don't avoid it. The second thing is, I found, you know, trying to not attend the meeting, our sound system in here needs an overhaul, so I want to ask the staff to look at doing something about our sound system here in the hall. That's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. So Vice Mayor brought up two points.
Thank you. You just, you just, you just made that point.
So the two points that he brought up, the first one, he wanted to talk about replacement in regards to Councilmember Bill Hawkins. The reason why we haven't already had talked about that is, unfortunately, with passing, it fell upon a time where we ended up going into such an unprecedented time in regards to what we're experiencing with COVID-19. So we're slowly coming back. We're slowly coming to meetings. And yes, that is something we can talk about. I know that, that's a conversation too, that with talking with our town manager, we've said, hey, you know, how do we want to handle this? And we said, when we come back and we're all seated and we can be in a building, we can have, you know, this discussion. The second thing that he brought up was our sound system, and this is something that we've heard numerous times. We've, yes, we've had messages. I know that, you know, for example, my parents watch all the time and they say, hey, we couldn't hear anything. So then they have to wait and play it back at a later time, and then the sound comes on. I know that sometimes it works and sometimes that it doesn't, so maybe we need to find the consistency with that. Did that capture everything well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So in final, final call to council, I just, I want to say thank you, first of all, again to all of our youth that are going to go out and enlist and serve our country. It's a big deal. And it's so much appreciated, so we want to make sure that we continue to support them and continue to support their families. And again, just to recap, you know, going through the CIP, and that's just the CIP portion, that's not even our general fund portion, that $3,499,578, that's huge for grants. You guys are doing a great job, and it deserves to be said again. And I also wanted to let council know, I have been selected to serve on the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, the Budget Finance and Economic Development Committee. So that was something that I had applied for, and I was selected to serve on. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity. Now with the curfew in mind, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn from regular session?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Have a great night.